Well, welcome. Welcome, everybody, to our town council meeting. I'll call this meeting to order and we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, into this vote with liberty and justice for all.
All call Kate.
Here.
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 Thank you. Okay. So, welcome, everybody. We're a little bit, probably going to be a little rusty. We had a month off. Shame on us. But it was good, and now we're back. So the next up on our agenda is our Audience of Citizens. So if anyone in the audience here first will take in person, and if not, we'll go to... Yes, come on. Hello.
I'm Carrie Tiscia. I'm the Director of the Berlin Pack Library. And since today, since it's the beginning of September, I wanted to talk about Library Card Sign Up Month. And I just want to mention a few reasons why our library is so special. So you might have a lot of expectations of what a library normally is, but I'll go through a few unusual things that we have at our library. Did you know that you can check out a lawn game, a metal detector, a movie projector and screen, or a board game at the library? We also offer free or discounted museum passes to local attractions. Our library has a variety of vegetable, flower, and herb seeds available for anyone to take visiting the library. And we have many resources for memory care. We have a dedicated section of the library containing books, memory kits, resource lists for those dealing with memory loss and their caregivers. And we also host a monthly dementia caregiver support group led by a professional facilitator. Digital resources, Berlin cardholders have access to eBooks, downloadable audiobooks, e-magazines, all for free with a library card. We offer New York Times Online, Wall Street Journal Online, which could save hundreds of dollars in subscription fees. If you want to learn a new language, we have an online learning app. And if you have children in your life, the library has a great children's play area and so many programs and storytimes for children. And I'd just like to remind people that the best way to support your library is to have an active library card and use its resources. Spread the word to your family and friends and neighbors about everything it has to offer. In September, we're lucky that our Friends of the Library sponsored this, and everyone who signs up for a new card, renews an expired card, or refers a friend to get a card will be entered into a drawing for a gift card to Stop &amp; Shop or Barnes &amp; Noble. So we would really like if everybody in Berlin, every resident, had a library card, and if everybody could spread the word about library cards, that'd be great. And one last thing, I just wanted to invite everybody and the Town Council, too. We have a ribbon cutting on Saturday, September 20th. We have done something pretty original in our library. We have reorganized our whole nonfiction section to be easier for people to use. We've gotten rid of the Dewey Decimal System. We're only a handful of libraries in the state that have done that.
Thank you. Thanks for the info. It's a great place. You do a great job there.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yes, of course.
I just want to say that I recently toured our wonderful library, and I was amazed at all the stuff that is available out there. It has certainly changed over the past 60 decades. Nice job. You guys do a wonderful job over there. I would encourage everyone to go and visit. Thank you.
That's great. Okay. Oh, we're near that there. We got the phone. Okay, so, yes, sir. Come on up. Yes. Name and address for the record.
Cornell Budria, 115 Skinner Road. Good evening, councilors. My name is Cornell Budria. As few of you may know, I'm co-founder of an organization called Grassroots Berlin. We're a nonpartisan community group that works to bring neighbors together through civic engagement, events, and volunteer opportunities. In July, a couple of our members and I met with Town Manager Curly after our group's planned bingo sponsorship at Senior Center was abruptly canceled. We had that conversation to better understand the reasoning, and we left hopeful that a clear policy could help avoid confusion going forward. And that's why I'm very glad to see tonight the new Senior Center event sponsorship policy is before you. I want to thank all the staff that put their time into creating this policy, especially Senior Center Director Tina Doyle for their work on this, and I urge the council to adopt it. At the same time, I encourage you to ensure that the policy remains as open and inclusive as possible. Draft language provides a very helpful framework. As written, could unintentionally limit some sponsors. For example, businesses that don't fall neatly into the categories, or even individuals who may be active in political campaigns, but simply want to support seniors in a nonpartisan way. Keeping the door open to all community-minded sponsors will only strengthen the center and its programs. You for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the audience? Nobody here? And online, do we have any? Hands up? Wait, I don't see anybody, right? Nobody? No. Oh, yes.
I just want to say that you did receive a letter, but the letter is for the public hearing. All right, so if you could read that during the public hearing.
Oh, for the public hearing you want to read. Okay, okay.
I think you.
Got it. All right, thanks, because I was going to read it next, so that's good you told me that. Okay, so no one else is, wants to speak, so we will go ahead and close our Audience of Citizens and...
I'm sorry, I can't figure out how to raise my hand. I usually zoom on my computer. I'm on my phone. I apologize.
No problem. You have the floor. You're all set.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Shannon Smith. Do you need my address before?
Yes, please. Yes.
I live at 117 Percival Avenue.
Okay.
I just wanted to voice some concerns as far as the Knights of Columbus next door. When I purchased this house, my husband and I and our family about a year and a half ago, I asked our inspector, actually, because I heard that there might be something going in next door. And I asked the inspector if that was going to be an issue as far as asbestos, with the demolition and all of that. And he asked me, well, who owns the property? And I said, the town. And he said, oh, no, you don't have to worry at all. So that made me feel very comfortable purchasing the home and everything. And now, excuse me, that I find out the property is being sold. I'm just, you know, obviously have some, some big concerns regarding what the process is going to be for getting that, one second. Taken down, and I just want to make sure that all the proper precautions are going to be taken, not just wetting it down, but, you know, barriers, stuff like that. So I'm looking forward to hearing some maybe details for that, whether in this meeting or, excuse me, in upcoming meetings. And I know some of my neighbors are thinking the same. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, no, thank you. No, that's understandable. You know, it's been that way for so many years. Nobody's touched anything there, so, yes, as we get closer, you know, when they get to the, we're not, we're not quite there yet. We're almost there for the demolition, demolition phase of that project. So I'm sure we'll have something at, you know, a hearing, or we'll have, you know, something at Town Hall. We could brief everybody if they're concerned as to what, you know, what precautions they'll take. I mean, the contractor, we've hired the company that is going to be putting up the housing. Very experienced. They've worked all over the country. They're from Simsbury, Connecticut, and they were vetted, you know, very, you know, took a long time to vet them. And so we have the utmost trust with them. They will do everything the best way, because, you know, that will be the property they also, as they build it, they're going to manage it, too. So, yeah, no, we hear your concerns, and we wouldn't, you know, want to have any issues, and we won't. I'm sure we won't with these folks. They'll work very closely with the town, and, yeah. But when we get closer, we can lay out the, whatever plan they have. The first steps would obviously be demolish that building. And, yeah, we can make sure there's, we vet them as far as what they're going to do to protect the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Which should be coming soon.
Yes.
So, yeah, thanks. Appreciate that concern. All right, any other, anybody else? We're good? Okay, we'll go ahead and close that. Audience of citizens and Mayor's update. We've got a lot on our agenda, so the only thing I want to say is, don't forget the Berlin Fair, okay? It's coming up very soon, so, very soon. Kind of early, you know, they moved the date, but it gets here much quicker than usual, and hopefully the weather is good next, the next week. I believe it looks like it's supposed to be, but do we ever really know what the weather will be? Never, we never really know. But, yeah, so that's the big event coming up, and we look forward to it. So we'll go to our meeting agenda. I do want to add an item, Kate. Should we do our consent agenda first and then add it? Or what? Okay. So moving on to our consent agenda. We'll go ahead and make, take a motion on that.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second on that? Thank you. So we have eight items on here. We've reviewed them. Most of them are donations to different programs in town, to the library, our K-9 program, Bench for Timberland, another Timberland, a couple donations there. And so, all good stuff. If there's no questions, we'll go ahead and vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved. And we do, yeah, we do have our, of course, I forgot, we do have our public hearing, but, but... Yeah, let's do that first. So... Let me... Yeah, I have the sheet here. I got it like here. There, okay. All right, so we'll, oh, that's, we have the letter twice here. Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order, the purpose of the public hearing. We'll meet at Town Hall, Council Chambers, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut, on Tuesday, September 2nd, 25 at 7:00 for the purpose of holding a public hearing as follows. The sale of 143 Percival Avenue, former Knights of Columbus property to Vesta Corporation, Oriordan Magani Architects for the proposed development of 70 affordable senior housing units, and that's dated 29th of July, 2025. So now we have comments from the public, if anybody wants to comment. I know we already had one comment. Okay, I'll read that now. Yeah. So we do have a letter from Francis Paul in 123 Percival Ave, Kensington, Connecticut, dated yesterday, to whom it may concern. I have resided next door to the former Knights of Columbus building for the past 43 years. With the sale of the property, I want to address some privacy and safety concerns. First, I am addressing the safety concern. The building is due to be razed for development. This building, constructed many years ago, is likely to have some asbestos as part of it. I would like to understand what steps you are taking to ensure that the demolition will not affect the health of me and my neighbors. Secondly, I want to address privacy concerns. With the proposed sale, my home will border a commercial property. I am requesting that a line of sight division, i.e. stockade fence, be installed to retain my privacy. Previous discussions of commercialization of the Knights of Columbus property have addressed this concern. I am hoping that you will also. Other residential properties bordering the proposed development may have fences already noted on the plans. Please describe the plans for my property as well. Sincerely, Francis Paul. So... Go ahead. Mayor, I would say Aaron from Vesta Corporation is on. I don't know if Aaron wants to address it. He also sent me an email. I could read as well. Aaron, do you want to address anything?
Bert, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, good evening. Thank you for having me. Yeah, I did want to address, Ms. Smith brought up this concern earlier, and I did see the letter from the other neighbor, Ms. Paul. I guess the, the first thing I wanted to point out about the asbestos is we will be demolishing the existing building, and we are assuming that there are, that there is asbestos in, in there. We've hired a third-party consultant. It's a company called GeoQuest out of Bloomfield, Connecticut. They are our environmental consultant, and we've partnered with them for many years on, on many different projects, both in the state and out of the state. We are going to follow whatever recommendations they have as far as the companies that will be performing this. They'll all be licensed in the state, licensed professionals, and they will follow all state, federal, local guidelines as it relates to the abatement and the demolition. That does include using wet methods, as Ms. Smith noted, and they will be required to do perimeter air monitoring throughout the process. In the grand scheme of, you know, abatement and demolition, this is a relatively small job, as it really, just by the size of, of the building itself. It should take about two weeks to, to complete. And again, we're going to follow all, you know, local, federal, state rules and regulations as it relates to that. I will point out as, you know, with, with this demolition and with the construction, there is a large deal of oversight of this project. We're getting funds from the state of Connecticut, from CHFA. We're getting funds from DOH. We also have a tax credit investor. There's going to be a lot of different agencies and entities overseeing this project. So that's what we're used to. We do this all the time. So there will be a very high level of oversight, different construction, third-party consultants, making sure that we're doing this properly. And I would, as, as the time comes, and I think we're, we're still on track to start construction in quarter one of 2026, I would invite Ms. Smith and Ms. Paul and other neighbors. I can set up a meeting with GeoQuest, and I'm sure they'd be happy to go over the process and make sure you guys are comfortable with it.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And then Ms. Paul's concern about privacy. I believe she is located on the north of our parcel. I don't think, again, that's where the, the existing driveway is where we're going to be putting our new driveway. I think there's significant tree cover right now between her parcel and the town's parcel. We're not planning on getting rid of mature trees. In fact, I think, I believe some of them are on her property. But again, that's, those, those trees, I think, are slated to remain. And again, we'll, we'll work with Ms. Paul. If any of them need to come down, we can plant new ones. But again, happy to have that conversation with her directly about what kind of privacy or other elements she might want as we, as we begin construction.
Okay, yeah, no, I know, I know, when the, before it happens, that's great to have a meeting, and some of us will, will like to be there, too. So, you know, whatever questions any of us have, too, and if we have any tonight, we'll be next. But, yeah, appreciate that. Long time coming. Glad to see it's finally almost here. I don't want to jinx it, but we're very, very close. And the greatest thing to me is that although it took a long time to get here, we have 20 more units than the town really had planned. You know, we had planned 50 units back, back a long time ago, and I was planning and zoning. It was 50 units, and now it's 70. I know it's a few more than, you know, but the site can, you know, hold that many units, and it's 20 more units that we have available, and we're so happy. We are finally almost crossing the finish line, and I'm sure Vesta, based upon your reputation, certainly as I mentioned before, what we, you know, how we vetted you guys, we're happier, the, the ones doing the project, and that we know you'll, you'll do the best for the town and for, for the neighbors. So appreciate that. Yeah. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we're still in the public hearing, yeah. I think, I think, you have to come up, sorry, sorry about that. No, it's okay. No, we're good. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Ravor. We live at 167 Percival Avenue. The sale or the sign that talked about the sale for today, it mentioned revised lot lines, which is why we're here, because we were present at a prior meeting, and now that information seems changed or something's been revised. We were just curious if you could speak to the, like, what's been moved as far as the lot, and if it's going to impact our property in a way that maybe we aren't sure of from being at previous meetings.
I'm happy to give a short answer, unless, Ryan, I don't know if you want to describe it.
Yeah, Ryan, you want to?
We have Maureen here, too, Aaron.
Oh, Maureen. Yeah, let's have Maureen.
So, what, Maureen, do you want to come up?
Town Planner will help you with that, yeah. Yeah. We got the maps, too. Yes, excellent, excellent. We knew you would.
I'm used to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Everything's mapped.
Yes.
We outlined in orange the parcel that is going to be proposed to be conveyed to Vesta. What is in yellow around the edges is what the town, with the orange, is what is currently the property. So what the town is doing is retaining this rectangle at the bottom, adjacent to Longdale Street. This is also town land, and that triangular shape at the top. So the lot line is being revised to have, thus to have a little less property than the Knights of Columbus was conveyed as. No change along here. This is all the existing lot lines up until you see the yellow.
And Percival is this way.
Percival is over here. Longdale is down here.
What's that? Do you have, what, you good? Oh, you're good, okay. Okay. Thanks, Maureen.
And your visual.
Yes, the visual aid. Got to have show and tell.
Can I adjust one other?
Yes, of course.
I did also ask the building inspector, after we received the letter today from the neighbor, about the demolition requirements, and he provided me with the checklist that the demo permit requires for certifications that are, are required before a permit can even be issued, and that includes the oversight of the state agencies that, that deal specifically with hazardous materials.
So could folks find that? Where would they find that, so they can look at it?
Have it right now. I don't know. It's an, it's a pretty old form.
Okay.
It's on our old letterhead.
Yeah.
He found it. He still uses it and distributes it. I can check that he has it digitally.
Okay, and then we could maybe attach it to the post, attach the notes to this meeting, too, so maybe people could find it and review it. Yeah. The other lady will be interested in that, too, so.
And the other is that screening and the northerly property line was one of the conditions when the Planning and Zoning Commission saw the application and approved it. They did have a condition that the barrier along the northerly property line, granted, the discussion focused primarily on the park, so that, you know, users wouldn't be crossing unaware that they were crossing the property line. But I'm confident that the Vesta Group would work with staff and continue to work with staff on that.
Right. That's, that's good to hear.
Very cooperative.
So before, so don't leave. This may be the, maybe the council members have a question. Yeah. Is that, is that good folks? You're welcome. So, council members. Ron, if there's no one else from the public here, anybody else for this? No. Okay, so what do we have?
I know we have.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Just one question. He said, he had mentioned that the demolition is in the future. Do we have a proposed date or a concrete date as to when the demolition is going to start?
He said the first quarter of '26.
I said construction would start.
Yeah, that, that's part of our construction schedule. We can't...
What about the demo? You're talking demo also starting up in the first quarter of '26?
Yeah, there's, we, we need to have all of our financing in place in order to start.
Okay.
It's actually a requirement. Some of these funds are for federal funds. You can't, you can't start action before the closing for environmental purposes. So when, when I said quarter one, that's, that's what I meant. That's, that's the first step, is the abatement and demolition of the building.
Okay, understood. When you do start the demolition, can you contact the town manager? So we would, so the council members and the mayor would have a firm start date, then?
Of course, and as Maureen said, we will have to get our demo permit. I think there is some timeline attached to that demo permit, but Ryan and I email quite regularly and would have no problem giving a heads up of when that exact date is.
Okay, thank you, because I'm sure the neighbors are going to want to know when, when the demolition will start. So, you know, we can get that information out to the, to the surrounding neighbors there around that property.
Of course.
Thank you.
Anyone else? The council? We good? Okay, thank you, Maureen, for being here. Appreciate it. So we'll go ahead, and at this point, we're all set. We'll close the public hearing on this matter. Next. Okay. Yes. If we could add a motion to, and, good night, folks. Thanks for coming. A motion to discuss a proposed parking fee for students that drive to Berlin High. I guess it would probably be like, I guess, junior and seniors, I suppose. Discuss the, the merits of doing that, I guess. I don't know who else to put it.
Move. Move.
Second? Thank you. All in favor? Yes.
Aye.
Waiting, yeah, and I didn't hear either. Motion, we're all in favor of discussing that? Yes, yeah?
Yeah.
Opposed? Are all, okay, we're all, yes. This motion? No, let's make it number one. After the public, after the... Let's do that first. 1A, 1A. Let's do 1A. That sounds good to me. Yes. All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll start with the... Number one. Wow, there you go. Number one. And so this is a follow-up to the public hearing that we just happened on the sale of, of town-owned property on Percival Avenue. And this is an 824 recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Department, and our planner, Maureen, is here as well. This is for you to accept the report from Planning and Zoning on the sale of town-owned property. I don't know if, Maureen, do you have anything to add on that, or? Okay, pretty straight. Yeah, I mean, we've been discussing this for a very long time, and as we mentioned earlier, and we're happy to see this finally moving forward, which is wonderful. So, questions, folks? Anything? Anything on this, folks? We're good? Okay, we'll go ahead and take that.
Move to accept receipt of the Connecticut...
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, so moved. All right, thank you. So on to 1A, our parking fee. So the parking fee, I guess, came about sometime before the beginning of school. I'm not sure they fully implemented it yet, but, so it's $100, I guess, for anyone driving for the year. I mean, so we, we did, myself and Donna had a discussion with the superintendent and Julia, head of the Board of Ed. And I guess the reasoning for it, I find troublesome, but the reasoning for it was they somehow need another $20,000, I guess, in their budget. And because of the $50,000, we lowered the budget by after the voters asked us to lower the school budget in two referendum votes. Apparently now they're $20,000 short. I don't, I don't know how you can be short at the beginning of the year, quite frankly, which was part of the discussion we had. And in a 54, I think, .6 million dollar budget that we approved, 4.2% highest budget increase they've ever had, quite frankly, in the last 20, 25 years, to, you know, kind of add another fee and another taxes, I would look at it on the, on the students driving to school and their parents, to me, does not make sense. Seems like another appropriation. They already have their appropriation and to add that in now is, seems pretty disingenuous to me, in my opinion, to add that. And not to mention, now the years, the year isn't closed out yet, the last budget year, but already the Board of Ed has, so far documented a $40,000 surplus. So there's, there's half right there, 20,000, in their surplus from last year. And it's not finished yet. And typically over the last several years, every year they've had a surplus, a minimum of $500,000 surplus. And that probably comes, gets on the books maybe around October, probably, I think, like the town, right? The surplus usually, something like that. So I, I, I'm at a loss to understand the fee and what the 20,000, of course, is replacing. Really, that was not clear either. Not to mention, it's a town parking lot. The town maintains a lot. We clean it, we plow it, we stripe it, we fix it. There's no expenses out of the, out of the school budget to fix up that parking lot. It's a town parking lot as it is a town building. You know, we're spending millions and millions of dollars to upgrade the HVAC. So I, you know, we, we had all this discussion with, like I say, the superintendent and Julia, president of the Board of Ed, and really to no avail. The Board of Ed, you know, made the decision, obviously, to do that recently and I want to tell them, no, it's a town parking lot. There are some cases, I know there's some case law, other schools do it, doesn't make it right. And as we know, statutes are subject to interpretation, but I just really don't see the need for that at this point in time. And how, how they need the 20 grand at the start of school, the budget just started in, right, July? So I, I don't know. And there is a surplus of 40,000. Take, take the 20 out of that if you need something, if you're desperate for something at the beginning of the school year, when that closes out, there's your, there's your 20 grand and then some. So I don't know. I don't know what everyone else thinks. I'm kind of offended by it and don't see it necessary.
I, I think we agree. Now, this is fraught with problems. I mean, what if your birthday is in January and you start driving in February?
Yeah.
You paid 100 upfront?
Nah, 50.
What if you don't get a car? So, you know, come on, let's be practical here. I mean.
There you go.
It's tough enough for these kids to get a car and insurance. Now you're going to whack them 100 bucks to park it? Come on.
Back to $50,000. The message there, don't they?
Yeah, the, you know, that's interesting on that message though. So the message I got from, through Julia from the Board of Ed was, well, only 7% of the voters came out and voted. So, and they did, I've heard that message before and it doesn't matter who comes out, the numbers are the numbers. You know, if we have, we have a municipal election in the fall and if, you know, 6% come out and somebody wins by 100 votes or 50 votes, it's a winner. I mean, that's how it works. Pretty sure that's how our democracy works everywhere in this country. So I don't, that, that argument as far as we, we whacked them to 50, that was symbolic because the voters said their budget was too high. Now, every other year before this, the voters said it was too low and we added money in, even though the voter turnout was the same. So we're very consistent on how we treat our referendums, as we should be. But this time, the message is, I guess, not what they want. So now it shouldn't count. And that, that's from Julia telling me that's what the Board of Ed discussed. And I find that just completely invalid argument, but, you know, to that point, anyway. Yeah.
I think it's problematic to say sort of in generalities that the ref, the result of the referendum was they wanted us to take money out of the budget. I mean, we've had so many conversations about not being able to understand exactly what the information is being transmitted by these referendums. But I feel like that's problematic to say, you know, we did that because they lost the election or what have you.
Yeah.
So, you know, I certainly don't want to take out these disagreements on the children, of course, you know what I mean?
Of course.
So don't necessarily disagree.
Yeah.
With, you know, your position that this is, you know, maybe not the best idea and I understand why. But I also didn't vote to cut $50,000 out of the education budget, so. But I'm inclined to, in the end, agree with you, I think, on this one.
Okay, good. Hey, I like that. That's all good.
I think everybody in the council.
Favor us, do for you.
I think everybody in the council wants the students to get what they need. And if the school board actually needs something and they came here and said, we just don't have the money to provide for a certain specific program or some specific item, I think we would find the money. But just to generically milk 20 grand out of the students because they can is absurd. It's a, it's a political stunt.
They've asked us to put money back in the budget.
For what?
And we, collectively, maybe not all of us, but we have said no, and they've had to eliminate future positions. So it's, I mean, it's funny to say that. I can understand why maybe they don't have a lot of trust in that as an asset.
Whatever it is, we arrived at that budget, it was approved and asked the budget that was given to them. And if they actually hit a dead end and needed money for a specific cause, I think we might be sympathetic. But just to generically add $20,000 back into that bottomless pit, we don't know where the money goes. And the way they want to raise it, to me, is absurd. So I'm just, I can't agree with this.
I was completely arbitrary. Just saying, I get it. I, I don't think this is the way to do it. I, I definitely think there's a message here and I think we're, you know, in this position for the way it all comes around.
Maybe we should have just cut 30,000 instead of 50,000.
Well, I guess that, you could say that, but I guess.
We're basically just looking for a cut when that referendum come out.
Well, yeah, we have to do what the voters asked us to do, but, you know, that's, that's another argument. We won't go there. We already got past that, but.
What the voters asked us to do, but I mean, you don't necessarily had to take $50,000 out.
Well, and.
That came from.
For the extra 20,000 though, I don't, I don't think there's any staff positions they're going to hire at 20 grand a year, at least not teaching positions that I'm aware of. But, so it, it's not clear what the 20,000 is even for. And to worry about that amount at the beginning of a budget year makes no sense at all. And we always have had, since I have been here, a standing orders with them clearly said, you get to the end of the year, there's some program you need to fund and you didn't have the funding, you come back to the council during the year, at the end of the year, whenever. And if it's that important to you, we're going to fund it. And there's no program attached to this that I, that I heard, right, Donna, from, unless I remember our conversation?
Specifically.
Right.
Program, whatever, it was just, you know, this is what we're doing. And I think it's horrible that they were trying to whack those kids 100 bucks to park and we maintain the property, the property's owned by the town, we do all the maintenance to it. I just think it's horrible that they allowed you that.
Mr. Jeff, we know you'd be weighing in on this.
I mean, I, from a legal perspective, you know, you can see both sides to it, right? I mean, under Title 10 of the general statutes, the Board of Education controls how their appropriation is spent. But we're not really talking about that. We're talking about a scenario where you've got municipal property and the Board of Ed has statutory responsibility for managing that property that's owned by the town. But if the town plows the snow, maintains the parking lot, provides any security, and there's not direct Board of Ed expenditures that are going to be defrayed by the additional revenue that comes from the fee, then you're talking about a municipal function rather than an educational function. You know, the Board of Ed controls how it spends their appropriation, but it doesn't control how much of an appropriation they get, right? Statutorily, you have the MBR, the Minimum Budget Requirement, and the Board of Education received an appropriation that was a couple million dollars above the MBR, right? You gave them an increase of, I think.
2.1, I think.
Yeah. So you're not, you know, you're kind of, you're, you could, you could see it as an attempt to circumvent the budget-making process by imposing a fee that wasn't part of the budget. You could see it as the Board of Ed, you know, exercising its statutory authority to manage the property the way that it wants to manage it by imposing a fee, in which case it should have been in the budget to begin with as revenue.
May I ask you a hypothetical?
Sure.
Okay. So how is this different than, say, like renting out the gym for special events? Because the Board of Ed gets that revenue, right, from renting facility space?
Yeah, I mean, usually, I can tell you from my experience, the six years that I spent on the Trumbull Board of Ed, when we would have these conversations about the gym, we have to pay staff to stay.
Yep.
And clean the gym after the event. So we would have costs associated with the event versus the parking lot where if the town is covering all the costs for snow plowing, maintenance, and then the other, you know, potholes and all that stuff, then this revenue clearly wouldn't be used to offset expenses associated with the parking lot, unlike the gym scenario or the theater scenario.
That is another problem I was going to bring up later. That's a whole nother issue though. We'll, we'll go down that road a little later. Yes, yes. Yes, that's funny you brought that up, but.
Yep.
Okay, so that's that. What do we, what are we thinking, folks?
How can parents or the kids have anything to park on those premises? Absolutely not.
So, okay, we don't think we should and we're going to advise them not to charge it, I guess, is what we'll do. Let me take a motion on that, right?
Is that?
Where does that leave us, Jeff?
Yeah.
Yes.
What would they do with any?
It's a good question.
Well, I mean, look, you know, you can express as the legislative body of the town that you don't want a fee being charged for, you know, for use of the town's property, in this case, the parking lot. And if they go ahead and charge a fee, then I guess you'll have to figure out what to do next.
They persist with the fee, we can just put up the gravel lot across the street and let the kids park for free.
There, well, there's a thought. Yeah, that might be a thought.
Well, there's a crosswalk and a speed bump there.
Crosswalk and speed bump.
There already is one there.
Put a cop over there.
Yeah, you could put a cop there.
Put a cop there, he'll cross them.
Yeah, you could do that if we have to.
There's one down the street when you come out.
Yeah, that's true.
That's true.
True, yeah, yeah.
So do we need a?
Yeah, I think we should take a, a motion on it to, you know, send our, yeah, yeah.
I need help wording our displeasure.
Kate, you want to write? You're, you're good or? Yeah, Kate knew that was, I had to do that to you, Kate. No, we, we can come up some, or.
Charge.
Or, 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 yeah, I think we will just say and review, you know, we disagree and as, as I think Jeff said it best, the legislative body of the town, to, to charge a fee to our residents and students and families outside of the appropriation process on town property is, we are not, we would not allow that. Discourage that, discourage.
Do you want to move?
Discourage, we could use discourage. Let's use discourage.
If you were going to, if you were going to charge a student, she might as well charge all the teachers too while you're at it.
Well, that, that did come up in our discussion, by the way.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, that did come up, but. So.
So move to.
We kind of got most of it, right?
Authorize the town manager to send a letter on behalf of the town council to the Board of Ed stating that you don't agree with the.
You object.
Parking fee charge.
Oh, maybe object is stronger word.
Why don't, if I can make a.
Yes, you can, of course.
Why don't, why isn't the motion to authorize the town manager to send a letter to the Board of Ed notifying them that the town council at its September 2nd meeting, after extensive discussion, respectfully requests that the board not impose or assess a parking fee because it's town-owned property and the fee would not be to fund any educational purpose, but would rather be tantamount to an unlawful appropriation.
Okay. We good with that?
I had to throw that in. I had to throw that in. You don't have to throw that last piece in. I don't know. You don't have, you don't have to put that last piece in.
No.
Whatever you want.
I like the last piece. That's the most important piece, actually, but, yeah.
We have a second?
We have a second on.
My hand.
We have, so we have a second on that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right, so moved. Okay. All right, we'll move on.
Council unanimously recommend.
Yes, we did. Well, that should, you know, great.
Put a gold star next to that one.
Okay. On to the rest of the.
Right, agenda item number two.
Thank you, folks, for the discussion.
So as, as Cornell had mentioned earlier, we have for your consideration this evening a draft of an event sponsorship for our senior center. And this came about because we, we realized we didn't have a formal policy in place. And so just as we have at the library and other town, public buildings, it, it's important to have policies on who may sponsor events and, and what type of events and whatnot. And so I, I really want to thank our senior center director, Tina Doyle, for, she really worked very hard on this draft. And then we sent it over to Jeff and Jeff also helped out with that as well. And so I, I will turn it over to Tina. She should be online with.
Nothing unlawful on this, Jeff? Just kidding. Got to throw that out there. Okay, we're good.
Thank you, Ryan.
Hi, Tina.
Hi. Hello, everyone. Um, yes, so, um, we were, I was given a directive to write a senior center event sponsorship policy, which I did. And what I did was I reached out to a number of my counterparts in surrounding towns to see what policies they had in place. And I kind of used a little from each of them to create this policy. I had it reviewed, I wrote it, I then added, asked Sammy for some input and also Jen, my supervisor. We then forwarded it on to Ryan and then it went on to Jeff for the final look-through. And what you have in front of you is that final draft.
Great, thank you.
used a little from each of them to create this policy. I had it reviewed. I wrote it. I then added, asked Sammy for some input, and also Jen, my supervisor. We then forwarded on to Ryan, and then it went on to Jeff for the final look-through, and what you have in front of you is that final draft.
Great, thank you.
So I don't know if you've had the chance to read it, if you have any questions.
Should we wait a, should we wait a?
It's good.
You sure it's good? I'd like a little more time.
He's an attorney, he thinks it's good.
Well, he does, but, you know, that doesn't mean we might not have changes to it. I just, I'd like to have a little more time to look at it, quite frankly. Because, I mean, it just came up. I guess, I don't know if it's come up before, Tina, but this year seems like it, for some reason, drew it to our attention, different things that occurred, not, not just actually at the senior center either, some other places too. So I'd like to really make sure we get it right the first time, and I'd like to just take a little bit of time and maybe put it on our agenda next time and, and vote on it, just to make sure we go through it and be careful with what, you know, what we're putting. If that's okay with everyone. I appreciate-
That's up to you. I mean, yeah, to, because it kinda goes over the purpose, the scope, general sponsorship guidelines, prohibited sponsorships, permitted political activity guidelines, the use of marketing and materials during sponsorships, fundraising and gifts, staff and volunteer conduct, and the right to refuse or revoke sponsorship, and also if somebody felt they needed to appeal a decision.
Yeah, no, on its face, it looks good. I just, if we could digest it, I don't think two more weeks at this point in time is gonna-
Yeah.
Change anything.
That's up to you.
Yeah, so let's just look at it, put it on the agenda next time, and we'll take a vote. And if there's any changes in between, we'll, we'll get it to, to Ryan to make the changes.
Can we track any changes so we know what you're getting?
Of course.
Sure. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go to everybody.
Um, so you'll let me know if you have any change-
Yes.
Meantime?
Yeah, any of us can let, let Ryan know, and he could just email us all, you know, what, what are proposed changes to it, and, yeah, I mean, on its face, it looks good, but, you know.
We'll put it back for the second meeting in September.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
That good? Okay.
Thank you, Tina.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks. It looks good. All right, all right. Number three.
All right, agenda item number three. This is in regards to our police, equipping our police vehicles. This is with Norcom and McGovern, and I think our deputy chief, Drew Gallup, is here with us this evening to talk about this.
Good evening.
Hey, Drew.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How you doing?
Good. Um, the, the purpose of this is we have two major companies that we use, Norcom and McGovern MHQ, which essentially switches cars over when we buy a new car. The old car, all the equipment and everything, has to be switched over to the new car. It's, it's a fairly considerable expense at times, and both of these companies both work off the state contract. We would just like approval to fluctuate between the two based on whichever company can give us the best price at the time. It is generally state pricing, but they do vary sometimes on availability, who can do the work, when they can do the work, and how long they think it's gonna take to do the work, and so sometimes we can get a, a better price from one or the other. So we just felt it would be in the best interest of the town if we have the flexibility to use whichever is the best company to use when we need the work done.
Okay, thanks, Drew. Yeah, that makes, that, that makes sense, I guess. What do you think, folks? Anything?
Makes sense.
You good?
Yeah, if we've used the companies already and it's just to help us save money, why not?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, well, go, let's go take a motion.
Move to approve using both Norcom and McGovern MHQ utilizing government pricing to transition new police vehicles with emergency equipment and lighting dependent on actual pricing and availability of needed items for an amount not to exceed $55,000.
You second on that? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Great, thank you. The next item, agenda item number four. This is in regards to our Visiting Nurses Association and their online or electronic record system, and we've been using the same vendor now for, for a number of years, which is NetSmart, and this is to continue using them for another year. Our, our director is here, Ed. I don't know if you have anything to add on this. I do know the VNA did get some-
Hi, how are you?
Numbers from other competitors, and this, NetSmart was the, the lowest, and so the recommendation is that we continue to continue using NetSmart.
Okay. Sounds good. What do you think, folks? Good?
Yep.
Everybody good?
Good, yep.
Great. Yeah, that's all good. All right, if there's other comments or questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the continuation of the contract for NetSmart's electronic health record and documentation system for one year amount not to exceed $28,140.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number five. This is a, another union contract, and our HR director, Paula Carabetta, is here this evening. This is with the Middle Management Association, and I know Paula's had a, a number of negotiations, and I know she's happy to have another one wrapping up here, so I'll turn it over to Paula to go over the changes.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, hi, Paula.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good. Um, the first section is under the overtime, so the first bulletin is really just fine-tuning the overtime eligibility piece. So, you know, folks are staying late or, you know, doing an evening program and such. They won't be eligible for OT, again, given that it's under their normal job description and normal job duties that they're expected to do. That second bulletin, the section three, is just consistent with the blue collar, so we added this into the blue collar contract. This is for, there's four employees total, three blue collar and one mid-management that are part of this on-call rotation. So we just added this in so that one mid-management gets the same benefit as the blue collar folks. And then the salary piece is 3% across the board for all three years. And then on the second page, under vacation, we added, this is again just some more fine-tuning. Going forward, folks that are on any type of, like, approved FMLA leave are no longer eligible to request payment in lieu of vacation or to carry over additional vacation time beyond the two weeks that is specified in the above paragraph. And then this last piece is the employee illness. So this is something that's definitely a little different. Right now, basically, they have unlimited sick time, so they have a very rich benefit in this union contract. They basically get up to six months at 100% pay if they're out for any kind of catastrophic, again, it would have to be under FMLA, but, you know, a surgery, god forbid cancer, anything like that. But in addition to that, for regular sick time, they have unlimited. So going forward, anyone hired after July 1, 2025 will have to now accrue, and they will get up to 21 days rather than just an unlimited, basically, free-for-all when it comes to the sick time. So this won't impact anybody that's a current employee. It'll just be for new hires coming in going forward. And then this, let me see, is that the last one, or is it? Under the miscellaneous, this is just going consistent with the blue collar contract as well. We just updated the meal reimbursements. It used to be 10 across the board, and now it's 10, 12, and 15. And then on the last page, this is giving a little bit more flexibility to the town manager. We have had a couple instances this year where we've had mid-managers out on FMLA, and when that time comes, the person underneath them is the one that fills, and they've been out for an extended period of time. So this allows them to get a little bit more than the original 7.5% above their salary. They can get up to that 10% if their, their supervisor is out for more than 90 days. And then on that second bulletin, it allows the town manager to consider a further increase if they, if we have a full vacancy. So in other words, if someone leaves, resigns, retires, whatever it may be, and we end up taking longer than we hope to fill it, we can allow the town manager to, you know, give a, a larger increase at his discretion if needed. And again, this is just ensuring that the employees are compensated, because at that point, they're filling their role in addition to someone else's role at the same time. Any questions?
Thanks, Paula, for that. Just one question. I, our labor attorney reviewed this, too?
Yep.
Okay, great. Just checking. Appreciate that. Any questions, folks? Lot to look at. Yes, there is. I mean, these are the, I guess, the highlighted changes, right?
Yeah, exactly.
All the rest is pretty much the same?
Yeah, exactly. Silly stuff, updating things, you know, language changes, you know, the, the housekeeping kind of thing.
All right, what do you think? Yeah, right down.
I have a quick question. The previous contract was for how long?
Three years.
Three years? So you do it every three years?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, they're all like that, too. Every contract is, is a three-year timeframe.
Anyone else? We good?
Yep.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve and authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with the Berlin Middle Management Association from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028.
Thank you, second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Paula.
Right. Move on to agenda item number six. This is in regards to the long-awaited Timberland bunker restoration project, which I'm sure no one here in the audience is here for.
No, I don't see anyone that would really care about it. I see no one out there that cares.
But, um, our, our director, Saul Guerrero, is, is here to talk about it. We had a successful bidding process, so I'll turn to, to talk about the, the winning bid and, and what's gonna come next.
All right.
Thank you, Saul. Good evening, everyone.
How are you?
As Ryan said, you know, long waiting, and we're very happy. Myself, the Golf Commission, and the Public Building Commission, we're happy with the results of the bidding. We feel Pace is very qualified to do the job. They have a lot of recent experience with renovating a full golf course, but also renovating bunkers to the capillary concrete that we're going to. They've done over, over 100 over the last three years, so we had a qualification of 40, so they're well above that. But also what makes them very qualified is they're, they're able to start October 1, which is right when we would like to start and finish before Memorial, Memorial Weekend 2026. As you know, I have brought some muscles with me. Golf, golf chairman, Jim Norton's here. Do you like a couple minutes here?
Thank you, everybody. My name is Jim Norton. Chair, current chair of the commission, and yes, it's a long time coming. We went through the bid process. We did interviews, extensive interviews, and, yeah, we believe this is a very good for the town overall. I think that where we're going with this thing is where we need to go. It's not a temporary solution. This is, this is a solution that will last many, many years, my lifetime. And-
How long, do we, do we know how long that is gonna be? I mean, that's a, that's a scary statement, I, you know.
Well, but, I mean, it's, this, this is where everything is going, and, I mean, we looked at different, different methods.
Yeah.
And, and so it's, it has been vetted very much so, and I'd like to also mention that, yes, it's a significant amount of money, but in the same token, the last six years, I think for you, with the general fund in excess of $700,000 in profits.
Right, right.
So you think about that.
Great.
You know, we have a lot more things that are coming from, we'll, we'll, we'll come in front of you.
Yes, we, we know they're coming.
There's a laundry list.
Yeah, we know it's coming.
Physically responsible, yes, we're there. And, you know, play, I, I call it the summer senior center. It is. It is a summer senior center. So you're out there, I mean, you know, people are out there, and, you know, they're enjoying themselves. They're out exercising, they're socializing.
Yeah.
They're not sitting in, you know, behind the, on the chair, you know, watching TV or something. It's a great thing, you know. This is, this is what it should be, so. You know, we're gonna have another meeting coming up pretty soon. There's more discussions after that. Please, I, you know, come up, look at what we have. The course is beautiful.
Yeah.
We're playing the course now, and they're shocked on the, on the, you know, well-kept it as a manager, so.
It's good to hear.
We do have an, it's, it's, it's an asset.
I'd just like to note, I played there Friday.
Yeah.
You can't call it, I do golf, but it, the course is beautiful. I mean, it's in great shape, and I'm glad you're fixing the bunkers, because that's more, I am most of the time.
We'll work out a plan for everybody. We actually met with some of the organizations, the Lady Niners, the, we're invited, the 18-haulers, the men's club, and the senior men's, discussed this whole thing, so it's not a surprise to anybody.
Yeah, good.
Right? And full transparency, here's what we're thinking. We work out a, a plan for everybody, so they know what's gonna happen, and we'll close down, you know, a couple holes at a time and figure out where we're gonna go from there. But it's a six-to-seven month project, right? And that's where we're gonna be. So it's a little better, yeah, now, right? Like on wood.
Yeah.
Just hope for a mild winter, right?
Yeah. Let's hope.
Everything's weather, weather-dependent.
Of course.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions, folks? Questions, anything? We good? Okay, I think we're good, so we can take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager, Ryan Curley, to enter into a contract with Pace Landscaping for the Timberland Bunker Restoration Project not to exceed $1,195,895, which includes a $150,000 contingency amount.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Saul.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Uh, you wanna jump into the next agenda item, then? This is the annual purchase for chemicals.
Okay.
Yeah, this next one's an annual request with Harold and Heritage.
Short putt on this one, huh?
Yeah, we, this, that's where we get our chemicals from, and we use their early order program to get their rebates and discounts. The early order program, we get, we get it in April in the spring, but they invoice us in July. And that's, basically, the pricing we get there is a standard pricing that doesn't change for any other course, so we're basically dealing with the manufacturer themselves, but so we asked to go over, do, the bidding process is to waive the bid, thank you. I know in the past, y'all have asked about off-brand products, but still, right now, the off-brand products are, are not qualifying to, or quantifying to the same product that we get with the brand, but also the pricing is not much of a difference with the discounts that we get, so that's why we're staying with brand products and continuing the, the practices that we've been doing to the golf course in recent years, so.
Great. Thank you, Saul.
They're basically giving you the best price, Saul, right?
Yes, sir.
That's good. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll take a motion.
Move to waive the bidding procedure and purchases, purchase chemicals from Harold and Heritage Landscape Supply Group the amount not to exceed $160,000, because this is in the best interest of the town of Berlin. The chemical purchases are through the early order programs of BASF, Sigenta, FMC Corporation, and Heritage PMC.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Saul.
Saul.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hi, gentlemen. They're all cleared out now.
Clearing out, clearing them out. No.
We said?
They don't wanna stay when they see the size of this agenda.
They have a life there.
Yeah, they have a life, exactly. They actually have somewhere else to go, I mean, whatever, yeah, yeah, maybe. Or just home and relax, right? I will say that there is one problem tonight. I have noted. Very long agenda. No bottles of water. I don't know what happened to the water. We're all parched up. Yeah. I know Kate had some water up here. I did-
Just, for the record, when I walked in this morning, there were, there were seven bottles of water on Christie's desk, and I said, oh, must be a town council night.
Uh-oh.
Where they went.
Oh. Oh, yes.
You can eat one.
Yeah, I'll have one. Pass one down. Kate, I'm sorry, Kate, you know.
We got vodka.
Unless Kate wants to share her water bottle, I mean, we can. Cough drops, Eddie? Of course.
No, they-
No cough drops?
Nope.
We'll take what we can get at this point, though. Thank you, Kate. Sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll have one with cream and sugar, please.
Sandy's prepared, Kate's prepared. All right, we're not, the rest of us are. Yeah. There you go. Oh, there you go.
All right, moving on.
Yeah, moving right along.
All right. So the next item is, this is something that I asked our public works director to draft because you guys might remember, we've seen a lot of these project authorization letters where pals from the state, they keep asking us to sign these. These are kind of routine events that happen when there's state construction that we have to take some ownership or sign off on. And so what ends up happening is we have a lengthy discussion with you, the council, on something that's really very simple. And so the ask is that you allow me, the town manager, to sign these authorization letters as they come in with Jeff's review, and then provided that there's no financial or obligation to the town. If it's something as simple as just acknowledging a state project, let me sign it and then brief you on it at the next meeting, so we don't hold these up. Because I am routinely getting emails now, more and more often, from the state asking the status of these project authorization letters. And I have to explain, well, the council doesn't meet in August, so you're not going to get it until September. And there's, and I guess it's, I got a phone call today.
Oh, wow.
About one of them. And so I don't know, Mike, do you want to touch on anything I'm missing here?
I guess they're back from Labor Day, and they're calling up now, yeah.
Someone from the state made a call.
Yeah. The background on this is that the previous pals, as we call them, were to show the breakdown, usually of municipality share versus.
Police Athletic League? I'm confused on what you're talking about. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Yes, I got it.
They were really meant to show how the projects were funded. Typically, you know, the town's going to kick in 20%, whatever. These are now, they involve no town funding, you know, and they're good, they're good things. Some of them are going to be putting signs on town roads, but we have to sign off on them. And the town manager is a designated official.
Thank you.
In the agreement, so it just ties together. We're looking for streamlined process.
It makes, it makes sense. Thank you, Z.
Yeah, water break.
Appreciate it. Water break, water break.
Question on this?
Got some down here, Z.
I don't know if it was in July or June, but we had something I, and maybe it was not a pal that came through, that was going to put a sidewalk, but nowhere?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I want to make sure these are the things I'm thinking of. Okay.
Yeah, it was a signal on the Chamberlain Highway at Southern Road. And we spent probably 20 minutes talking about it, and there was no town funding, and it's all town, it's all state property, so.
There was no town funding to it, but if they were going to put a piece of sidewalk on there.
And two, and a couple ramps.
A couple ramps, well, then in the snow, we got to make sure it's shoveled or, you know, so, yeah, there was no town cost, but you'd have to maintain it type of thing, so.
That's typical of the state. They, and then we maintain it unless it's actually a highway or something else.
Just to, a counterpoint to that, though, is anytime the town installs a sidewalk, we do make the homeowners then shovel.
Right.
And clear as well. So we do dish that out ourselves.
Good. Well, I think it's only fair. That's good.
So, Mike, these weren't those nuisance letters that you spoke of earlier?
Yes. These are, I consider them administrative, and it's really sort of like a matter of course. They don't involve any town funding.
All right.
And the only obligation for, I'll give you an example. The second one we got was to put signs on rural roads in town. The DOT is paying for it, doing it. They expect us to maintain them, which we do anyway. So it's almost like, why are they asking us to do, you know, sign off and reference a contract?
Okay. The amount of time it takes, though, Mike, to prepare an agenda item on something like this, he could be spent doing other things.
And if anything got a little unusual, I think we'd run it by Jeff, and we'd bring it to you anyway.
Yep.
Because it was some sort of onerous obligation.
Well, I think the way the resolution's worded is I'll send Jeff all the pals as they come in for review, and I wouldn't sign anything unless Jeff gave the okay.
Okay.
Okay. We good?
Yep.
So what do we got? We got a motion?
Move to authorize the town manager to sign project authorization letters from the state that do not involve providing town funds or other resources for reference construction or improvement projects, provided that the pal has been reviewed by the corporation council before execution.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Oh, good. Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. So moved. Thanks.
I'll help.
Good.
We have enough to micromanage.
Yeah. You got a little bit to do, huh? Just a little bit, once in a while?
Give them a little bit more with agenda item number nine.
All right, here we go. Here we go, yes. Well, we should.
Part two of the police station.
I think Mike seems bored. He needs more to do, I think.
Okay, Mike, do you want to?
Yes.
Here.
So the good news is the PD project is done. We still have some financial stuff to close out, but that means that some stuff has left the original footprint and gone into the BAE storage area, and that has to be repurposed. So this is sort of part two of that whole project. So the Public Building Commission asked Kunske Humes to give us a proposal to do the rest of the work that's in the original footprint of the police department. And that's what this is. And the proposal that's before you is totals 142,500. They've already done the schematic design. They've already talked to the PD about what they want. I included in there this, it's like a schematic floor plan that shows in red the walls that are moving, but it includes a lot more than just the walls, its millwork, its security cameras, its lighting, its ceilings, that kind of thing. So, and all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing stuff. So this is meant to take us from the schematic design, final design, bid package, and then go to bid. And the construction administration after that, all the way through to close that, which is what they did for the first project.
The first project, the second.
PBC approved this and is asking for a bid waiver to proceed with Kunske Humes to finish this project out.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, to be clear, I heard some rumor out there that, oh, we weren't doing the second project at the PD, which we all know we've approved that, and that's moving forward. So I don't know where that was coming from, somewhere out in the community, but obviously there's a lot of misinformation out there, so that's great. We're moving forward. Questions, folks?
Look forward to seeing it.
Yeah, that'll be all finished up. It'll be nice. Yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's great so far. They did a great job on the first project.
Okay.
The parking lot, it's great. If we could make the front door look that good.
Get around to it. It's a two new overhead door, three new overhead doors in the back.
I like the big numbers, even I can see them, yeah.
Getting around to it.
Getting around to it. There you go. It is coming. Okay. There's any other comments?
Women in blue are happy with it, I'm sure.
And we got our motion. Ready for a motion?
Okay, true.
Move to waive the town's bidding requirements and authorize Public Building Commission to execute the owner-architect design agreement with JH Architects LLC of Berlin, Connecticut for the Police Department Interior Renovation Projects for an amount not to exceed $142,500, and for the Public Building Commission to direct the design team as it proceeds with detailed design in order to appear bid documents for the project, as this is in the best interest of the town.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Closed. So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. Okay, moving right along here. Trying to. Ten.
Yep.
Number ten. Moving.
Here.
Wait, it goes straight to eleven, I don't.
Yeah.
This is, oh, Slab-on-Grate Moisture Project.
Ah, yes.
Forget, no.
We can't forget this one.
Doug's here. I know we've been doing, Doug's, Doug and his team have been working hard all summer on this, on this moisture issue, and I think our contractor, we need to increase the amount, the increased work, right?
Yes. Evening, some air consultants. Just as I mentioned, the consultant's been great with us with the building commission, so.
Oh, good.
The work done this summer that was needed.
Yeah.
Identified the temporary repairs, and the invoices are coming in, some air quality testing and.
Oh, nice.
Some work, so we're just increasing the PO a little bit.
Oh, good.
They're on board through the operation as long as we need.
Yeah, that's good. We're getting it done. So we're done with all the stuff we could do this summer, obviously?
Work, yeah, for the summer.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Doug, what'd you say the increase was for?
For the consultant.
Okay.
And you want to mention we did do the air quality testing?
Yeah, the board of it has a report right before school opened.
And we're all good. I take it. Yeah, great. Yeah, that's.
Still on the agenda for the building commission for the next steps for further repairs and permanent solutions, but we're the architect, the building commission consultant, so.
Right.
It'll be continuing through the year.
Nice.
More to come on that.
That, that permanent solution, though, just may be in the seven, of seven figures. We don't know yet, just so, you know.
Couldn't we call them all the science project and let the kids learn from them?
Probably, probably we didn't need that piece of information tonight. No, it's okay, Ryan. I'm kidding. It's okay. I think we all kind of figured that.
Yeah.
Was going to be the case anyway, right? No surprise, unfortunately.
It grows on you.
It grows on you. There we go. Okay. All right.
Thank you. That's it for that.
That's it?
Thank you.
Good. Well, we're glad we got that part done. At least we're starting it, and everything's good with the. Thank you for that, and the air quality. Questions for Doug? Any questions?
Nope.
No.
I think we.
Doug, you forgot to pick up my tablet. We're at San Souci last week.
On my house account.
Yo, all right. We'll take a motion.
Move to approve a bid waiver and increase the purchase order for Weiss, Janney, Elsner Associates Incorporated of Shelton, Connecticut for an amount not to exceed $48,000 to cover current and future invoices related to Berlin High School Slab-on-Grate Moisture Project as previously approved by the Public Building Commission, as this is in the best interest of the town.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Closed. All right, so moved.
Thank you.
Still here. You're here, Doug. You got more, Doug. Yeah, just hang out, Doug. We see some more stuff here for you, so.
Doug, Automated Building Systems?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yes, this is our, excuse me, our building maintenance, I'm sorry, building management system provider. They've been here for several decades, lighting HVAC, so they're in our buildings. We have service agreements, covers all the, all our buildings for the annual agreements, and then any work that may exceed outside those agreements. So we just try to get the threshold pre-approved for the fiscal year. Start off about upper thirties for all the main buildings, for all the agreements, and then this is quite above that, but just in case something catastrophic happens, so.
Gotcha. Questions?
Track pretty good. A lot of improvements over the years, a lot of upgrades. Software's continually changing, so things we have to do annually and every so often. A lot, a lot of new stuff with the HVAC, too, in the elementary schools and high schools, so agreements are a little more.
Okay. Any questions for Doug? No? Take a motion.
Move to utilize sole-source contractor Automated Building Systems of Glastonbury, Connecticut, and increase purchase orders as needed up to $50,000 in Department 61's school expenses. Contractual services up to $50,000 is needed in Department 38 Public Building contractual services for fiscal year 2026.
I'll second that.
Thank you. There's no other comments or questions? All is in favor?
Aye.
Closed. All right, so moved.
Doug's here for the next one as well.
Twelve, yeah.
A number of.
One after that, one, yeah, one after that.
We're halfway through.
Yeah.
Same thing, too. The national contracts, state for the core infrastructure, elevators, HVAC, fire suppression. So these are usually ones where you exceed the $25,000 threshold in the fiscal year, so it gives us the flexibility to move up to that if needed.
Okay.
Are these already in a budget somewhere?
Yes. If we don't exceed the budget balance, it's just using the funds we have available and.
Okay, so we won't have to do a budget increase?
Hope not. I mean, things happen throughout the fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, a major disaster.
Transfer, but for the most part, this covers what's budgeted in our accounts to cover these agreements.
Great. Any other questions for Doug?
Nope.
Hearing none. Take a motion.
Move to approve purchase order increases up to $50,000 as needed during the fiscal year 2026 in both Department Number 38 and Number 61, without exceeding account balances for the following national and state contract service providers below for associated maintenance, repair, and service agreements on HVAC systems, elevators, fire, security systems, and IAQ mitigation measures at all town and school buildings. Johnson Controls, Train US, Carrier, Encore, Cone, Aiken, Applied Swan Associates, Security 101, Siemens, and Velfour.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Closed. So moved.
Everyone, $10,000? We talk about $10,000 increments.
Yes, yes.
All right, the next one is, Doug, again, this one's an exciting one. This is the roof to our town hall.
Oh.
That's right here.
Yes.
Few years in the making. Fortunate enough to get some funding, and the design went out to bid, had some good responses.
Oh, good.
One person removed their bid. They made a mistake, so they pulled it. But the next lowest bid has been approved and vetted through the architect, went with the building commission.
Oh, nice.
We're looking forward to getting going this year, and this should hopefully be done by the, well, it's the end of the calendar year, this calendar year, so.
Oh, nice. Oh, excellent.
Crazy mother nature.
You're right.
Yeah. Yeah, who knows? No.
Be a mild, mild winter.
Let's hope, yeah. Any other questions for Doug? We've talked about this quite a bit. Yeah, PBC saw this, so, all right, we'll take a motion.
Move to approve bid 2026-1 to All Seasons Contractor of Windsor Locks, Connecticut in the amount of $408,756, which includes a 10% contingency for re-roofing work at the town hall as approved by the Public Building Commission and Architect.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Hearing no other questions. All is in favor?
Aye.
Closed. So moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, number fourteen. Wow, we're just streaming along here.
Yeah, we're moving.
Great to say that, but.
Another fifty more to do.
Don't jinx it.
So in correlation with the town hall roof, you may recall that the town applied for and received a STEAP grant for of $1 million earlier, I believe it was in the spring. We're still working with the state to get a contract so we can begin that work. And one of the requirements for that is for us to submit this resolution, which is on page two. And so this action would authorize, allow me to sign that. And also any other grant paperwork necessary to move this along.
I think we could trust you for that, Ryan. I'm pretty sure we can.
Want to get, get a new roof at the.
We'd like one. We'd like one. Yeah, sign away. Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Should. Would make sense. Any questions?
Nope.
We've talked about this quite a bit, so we'll take a motion.
Move to approve the attached resolution to authorize Ryan Curly, town manager, to accept the grant, execute a grant proposal, and other documents as necessary to secure and carry out the purposes of the grant from the Connecticut Office of Policy and Management for Small Town Economic Assistance Grant of $1 million for the Berlin Peck Memorial Library Re-roofing and Mechanical Replacement Project, subject to approval of Corporation Council.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Take a vote. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. So moved. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, indeed.
So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is a topic that, as you all know, Steel Boulevard.
Oh, God.
Was up quite a, quite a bit, and I did touch on this back in July, I think, at our last meeting. I told you, you know, you may recall, we had, we've received a number of grant funds over the years from a variety of different sources. The most recent, one of the most recent was a $360,000 forgivable loan from DCD. And so while we were waiting on that, the council authorized $360,000 of town funds to be used as a bridge funding while we waited for that grant to be able to come in. And so we've encountered a number of obstacles on this site. And so I did, I told you that that $360,000 that the town appropriated was most likely going to have to be used, or at least part of it. And now it does look like it's a possibility that all of that $360,000 of town funds may need to be used, as well as potentially another.
More?
More, maybe, maybe. And so.
Oh, we know this project.
We had.
Definitely.
So knock on wood.
All right, all right.
We've been working really hard, and I know Newport's been moving things along. If you take a look at that site, it's going vertical at a rapid.
Yeah, they are moving along. That's. Yeah, they are moving along. That's great.
See Tony's on, uh, on this. Tony Valenti's on.
Oh, yes.
Um.
Hey, Tony.
But, um, I just want to touch upon some of the challenges that we've encountered recently. So one of the, and this is the reason why we we have, uh, these problems where we're at right now. And so on thirty Steel Boulevard, which is, uh, where the subsurface detention system's going for the fifty five Steel Boulevard project, uh, we had done a phase one and two, uh, assessment, uh, environmental, and, uh, the soils were determined to be, um, not polluted. However, um, when we actually got in there, uh, it was found that those soils were contaminated. And so soils need to come out for that subsurface detention system. And so because they're polluted, we ran into that same problem that we had on fifty five with polluted fill, uh, polluted soils. And so, um, these weren't as bad. And so we looked at some options and we actually were able to get these into the West Hartford, disposal facility. So they're, they're being accepted by West Hartford.
Oh.
And, um, which is good because the next option, we'd, we'd have to ship them up to Massachusetts, ship the dirty dirt up to Massachusetts.
Oh.
And it would go up another hundred thousand dollars.
Oh.
In cost. So, um, we, uh, contacted two vendors who were approved by West Hartford and Cisco, uh, is, uh, was the lowest of the two. And so the price in here is forty nine thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, I believe. Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Oh, boy.
Uh, so part of this, uh, tonight is to waive the bidding process to allow, uh, uh, myself, the town manager, to enter a contract with Cisco to dispose of that contaminated soil from thirty Steel as well as another ninety nine hundred dollars in contingency for that part as well. So the, again, we didn't anticipate additional dirty dirt on that site, but we had to, we have to dispose of it. And so, um, so this would allow us to do that. The next thing that came up was, uh, we have weekly calls on this project as well every Thursday. And I think on one of those calls, I I forget who mentioned a soft spot in a part, in the parking lot there and
Ah.
and it it turns out that the the soils in the parking lot due to, I don't know, excessive rain or whatnot, but are not, they're not suitable to put a parking lot on the way they are right now.
Oh.
And so again, we needed to look at options on what to do with this, these soils, because of course the soils are contaminated too.
Oh.
Sure.
Oh.
We, we reached out to, uh, Max Welty, who provided, uh, four, uh, four different options for the soil. And it turned out that the cheapest of the four options was to keep the soil in place and put a, uh, concrete slab over the soil. And but it's still not cheap because we have to put a fence on top of that too, because we're putting a retaining wall. We're keeping the soil there. So the retaining wall that we were already keeping dirty dirt there, and now we're keeping more there. So the retaining wall had to go up, which means that now a fence has to go on. And so the fence was another seventeen thousand dollars plus twenty thousand. So as you can see, things are.
Giving.
Yes. I just hate dirty dirt. Not fun.
Look in your packet, you'll see I have, uh, the proposal, uh, from BMW. You can see all the options.
Oh, yeah.
The, uh, to, to replace the existing material was in there from, uh,
Yeah, yeah.
Thousand, two hundred seventy two thousand.
Oh, boy.
This BMW's proposal to keep that that soil and put the four inch concrete slab there is a hundred ten thousand five hundred seven dollars and fifty three cents.
Oh.
That fencing that I mentioned, and then plus a twenty percent contingency, uh, on that. So those are, so those are two unanticipated, uh, problems that that just came up recently. And so, uh, as far as a potential additional other funding goes, uh, myself, uh, I believe, uh, Mike and, um, Chris, we have a meeting with the deputy, deputy commissioner at DCD on Thursday. We're going to be, um, seeing if there's a possibility of, uh, reallocating some funding from the, uh, Community Challenge Grant over to Steel Boulevard.
No.
Um, we, we are requesting a hundred eighty thousand dollars being shifted. I don't know if they're going to go for that, but we're going to try. And then we're going to talk about potentially, uh, getting additional funding as well. And so that's another motion is to, uh, allow us to to seek additional funding. Um, but I gotta tell you, it's, it's very tough because DCD has already given this project funds and they don't like to award the same project twice. They really, you know, they like to move on to newer projects and and so uh, we, we just had a meeting today and and even with that, that three sixty, we're about a hundred, let's say a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars in need of more. So I mean, we're, we're less than two hundred thousand dollars away. Knock on wood, barring any other.
Till the next soil we find that's contaminated.
I joked today, though.
Sorry.
Places to find these things. I mean, we're good.
I hope so. It's about time.
Running out of rocks, I think.
Oh, my God. I mean, listen, it's such a great.
Yeah, I don't.
Such a great project, but oh, my goodness, to get here is.
Yep. We've spent millions to give this property away.
Yeah.
Developer assumes no responsibility for any of the unforeseen issues. It's an amazing deal.
I mean, it is turning, though. It is turning a, a non-revenue property. You know, it will get, be back on the tax rolls.
The town bought tax-paying properties and knocked them down to build this thing. And.
We did do that.
Created this bottomless pit. I know we have a long tradition of farming in this town, but I feel like this is a dairy farm. We just keep getting milked and milked and milked. It's been going on for years.
That's good.
I pray this ends, because it's just, and we spent a half million dollars on a driveway to go to a train station. It doesn't go anywhere. I mean, it's unbelievable project.
No, I, I, yeah, I, I understand.
And it's not your fault. I don't mean to vent on you. It's just, please let it end.
No, the, the bridge.
Like a cliff.
We're gonna have to.
Use.
Use this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No more bridge alone.
The money does come through.
Money did come through.
It did.
So what I'm saying is we, we're, we're going through seven hundred twenty thousand dollars of funds.
Instead of the three, uh.
Three six.
Sixty, yeah. Yeah, ah, well.
And.
It's another three sixty. What the heck?
And then the.
Talking about.
It's awful.
Perfect kids for perfect.
No kidding.
I do want to point out that that Newport is, um, assisting, uh, they're, they're paying for the loading.
Yeah.
Of the dirt, uh, thirty steel.
Um, that's good to hear.
Uh, and then we also are having LaRero who's going to oversee that at thirty Steel. So that's five thousand dollars for for that part of the job. So there's quite a bit of actions tonight. I don't know. Mike, what am I missing? Do you want to come up and, have I missed anything?
I thi- I think we, I, I, I'm afraid to hear anymore, but.
But while you're behind.
Yeah.
Problem, but then.
Like, you talked about these presses.
Yes.
Pleasure to show you.
Oh, good, yeah.
Visual.
Yep.
This is the building that they're building right now. This is the area that's unstable and was actually the unstable. It was a fill that was spread out when the retaining wall went up and they tried to compact it and it wasn't just wet, it was dry. So it was running down about a foot and a half. We did two test bits. It gets solid about like foot and a half to two feet. So one of the geotechnical recommendations was take it all out and process that. And that, that's a two hundred seventy thousand dollar option. So instead, this area, you're gonna create a platform for the parking lot. So that's that by the building. This is thirty thirty Steel, which is coming, it's on the right-hand side, right across from the bagel place. This is about a five-foot cut and that's going to generate almost as much material as this. So that's another like thousand tons of material. Um, and that, I think the price we got is actually pretty good considering what it could have been. It could have been a hundred fifty thousand dollars to get rid of all that up in Massachusetts. So that's kind of the, where the, the dirty dirt piles are coming from and sustaining, this has to go, there's nowhere else. So it's a kind of, because that's where the stormwater system is for this part of the building and Steel Boulevard, so it'll all go in here and go out the park. So that's kind of the, the sort of like the big picture, so to speak. So that's where we are. And I think we're running out of place, like Ryan said, to find more dirty dirt. And more surprises, but I'm afraid to even say that.
I wouldn't say that.
We're on a call today. I'm like, I'm afraid to say, I think that's it.
So initially.
It is very close.
With, with initially, I mean, we knew this was a bad site to, for the town to have taken possession of, which was years ago, but but we never, we didn't know any of this till we, I mean, we, didn't we check that whole site over, like many times over?
Time, but I think a phase.
Yes.
Phase two was done on thirty Steel by.
Yeah.
Peace Environmental Company.
Right.
I think LaRero kicking, the, the framework was set, the deal action plan and all that. And, uh, I know the town has gotten a lot of money from the state and the feds for this.
As we have.
Brownfield grants.
We did.
All kinds of.
LaRero put the wells in looking for the groundwater.
Yeah, well, that was on, that was on actually fifty five, which was eight eighty nine. Uh, there's no wells on thirty Steel. That was, that was considered to be sort of a clean site. They're gonna put a park there.
Yeah.
When they started doing test bits and they're like, wait a sec, it's, it's called mildly polluted fill. Still costs like, you know.
Wouldn't they have tested the whole site in the beginning?
Uh, I think eight eighty nine was the factory site with the big, you know, they demoed it.
Yeah.
Slab.
Yeah.
Thirty Steel, I don't think had the slab there. So it was kind of considered a separate parcel.
Uh.
You know, by the machine shop.
Yeah.
By the railroad, by a machine shop and, and the factory was there. So obviously stuff.
Didn't we get a state law change so White Oaks property could accept fill like that?
I don't know anything about that.
Because, uh.
Uh, actually, I, I am here. It's Chris Edge. Um, yes, the, um, the state did create a program for so reuse. Um, the situation is you need to actually apply for the program to become one of the pilots in it. Um, and it needs to be a product at the tail end. We're working actually still with the Ritten Road property. So, yes, you can do that. The problem is, is the timing does not work because at Pleasant, they need to get planning and zoning approval before they can go into the pilot program or to apply for it. Again, we're hopeful they can. But yes, that was the work we had done with that. So, yeah. And in the future, the hope would be is to bring it to a place like New Britten Road.
Because wasn't Phoenix or somebody ready to do that and then you backed out?
Uh, uh, Clean Earth, yes. Clean Earth, um, yeah. Clean Earth had a leadership, uh, change and had essentially walked away. We have another party we've been talking to about it. Um, and actually, we have a Zoom meeting, I think, tomorrow on that as well. So we're hoping that we can make something happen with that one. But that's another one that, again, is sits there, huge backpacks, and we'll see where it goes. But yes, we are pursuing that with them.
Thanks. I, I mean, you know, listen, it's a great project. It's great. It's happening, but it's just been unbelievable that the every.
We keep getting surprised. There are rental sudden, oh, there's another thousand tons to get rid of or two.
Uh, yeah, I mean, uh.
Can I, can I just add a little bit of perspective?
Yes, please.
My sense when, when, when I became town attorney in two thousand sixteen, I found out about this property and we actually, eight eighty nine, we actually at the time had claims from a Butters about migrating VOCs. And I looked at the history of how the town ended up owning this property and I think everything that's happened is a prototypical uh, consequence of any significant brownfield redevelopment project. Because no matter how many test pits you do, no matter how many borings you drill, when you do phase two environmental, you're limited by the data that you're able to get your hands on. And my sense of Berlin has always been that you don't, it, it never, it has an agricultural background, not an industrial background. If you were to go and look in downtown Shelton on the banks of the Housatonic where sponge rubber and chromium processed and some of these other plants were, or you were to go to Norwalk or some of the other municipalities where I do work that have, you know, significant industrial tax bases that have been offline for seventy years and they had these brownfields. Just, just cleaning the brownfield up in and of itself is a significant accomplishment. Because if you look at others, you know, other scenarios, look at the tire pond in North Haven, okay? Prime real estate in North Haven and Hampden that will never, according to deep, be able to be developed. Okay? You have property that not only is being cleaned up, but is being developed to its highest and best use and is very attractive, is being done very well and is adding to your grand list. So, you know, I think you have to kind of balance the frustration, you know, with the outcome that you're able to achieve, which is a double win for the town because you, otherwise this property stays contaminated in perpetuity.
Right, true. Well, there's a dose of optimism. That's good. We, we did need that. We did need that.
It, it usually, I mean, these things tend, the tire pond litigation's been going on since the mid nineties.
Oh, my goodness.
You know, and these things do take a very, very long period of time. The difference here is that you've got a developer doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Agreed with that.
And you see the light at the end of the tunnel while we're all still here.
Yeah. No, that is true. No, I mean.
Didn't begin all that long ago.
That is true. I, no, I agree with you. I mean, it, it's a beautiful development. Developer's great, you know, it's just frustrating, but we get it.
A little context.
No, that's a good context. I mean, we, uh, look on that bright side and there is a bright side. It's a beautiful development, so. We'll keep that in mind. So, back to the motions. What do we, we, did we get through all the motions yet? Explaining them? One more? Yep.
I explained the motions on.
Yes, you did. Okay, so we'll just, I guess, we, questions? Any more questions?
No.
Okay, no. Like, no, let's go. Uh, all right, motions.
Move to waive the bidding process and authorize the town manager to enter a contracted amendment with LaRero Engineering of five thousand dollars for continuing environmental consulting services for thirty Steel Boulevard remediation project funded from the Farmington Avenue Development Loan Account.
Second. Thank you. Hearing no other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. So moved.
Move to authorize the use of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars town appropriation intended as a bridge loan in anticipation of execution of a state town contract for a forgivable loan to be used to fund project costs.
Thank you. Um, hearing no other questions? Uh, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. So moved.
Move to authorize the town manager to apply to D E C D for a round twenty-two brownfield remediation grant and for an urban action grant, both for the fifty-five Steel Boulevard remediation project or the cost related to disposal of contaminated materials at thirty Steel Boulevard.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. So moved.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter a contract amendment with BMW paving of ninety two thousand seven hundred. I'm sorry, to enter a contract amendment with BMW paving of ninety two thousand.
Oh, no, the. One ten? Oh, do you have, here, right here.
I don't have the.
Oh, you don't have the, there, there's.
Oh.
Sorry about that. I didn't know you had.
I don't have the. All right.
Oh, okay. All right, well.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter a contract amendment with BMW paving of one hundred ten thousand five hundred seven dollars and fifty three cents for soil stabilization work at fifty-five Steel Boulevard and change orders related to this work up to twenty percent of that amount. Twenty-two thousand one hundred and one dollars and fifty-one cents funded from the Farmington Avenue Development Loan Account, subject to planning and zoning commission approval for required revisions to the site plan and review of Corporation Council.
Take a second on that. Thank you. Hearing no other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. So moved. And?
Move to waive the bidding process and authorize town manager to enter a contract with Cisco LLC of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for disposal of contaminated materials from thirty Steel Boulevard to West Hartford landfill funded by nine thousand nine hundred dollars from Farmington Avenue Development Loan Account. This is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Hearing no other questions? We'll go on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, so moved.
Thank, thank you all.
Woo. Um, thanks.
No problem.
That was because of that fence that I meant.
Of the fence.
Yeah.
Um, to, um, I know Tony Valenti's on there and Tony, um, and Chris too, you mentioned it, but, and, uh, Jeff mentioned it too, and I've told you this many times, Tony and Mark, that, uh, yeah, we're happy to have you as a developer, believe me. I mean, I, I, I tell people all the time that at the beginning, your first building, when steel prices went up, that was, I think, around the pandemic, uh, anyone else would have walked away. I, I'm sure of that from my years on planning and zoning. And you guys stayed and you stuck it out and it's been a great partnership and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's working, but, um, and it, and it would have been to Jeff's example, it probably would have stayed that way with piles of dirt, probably forever. But so we are, we do appreciate what's happening there. It's great. It's just, you know, we, we, we gotta get to the end of the road here. We all want to see the end of that project because it is so nice. So, anyway. Thank you.
We, we appreciate your kind words and, and your ongoing support and, and we're looking forward to, to see the light at the end of tunnel as well.
I'm sure you are, Tony.
And, and we're, we're just about there. We're, we're actually ahead of schedule. We'll have that last building up and taking tenants, um, July of twenty-sixth, so we're, we're, we're definitely excited. You know, we're a hundred percent occupied with everything we own in Berlin and as I said earlier, we, we, we appreciate the entire town's, you know, partnership and, and ongoing support of us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Yes, oh my God, something. Okay, so we're done with that one?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll move on.
Number six.
Number sixteen, I'll turn it over to our town clerk, A. Wall, for an update.
Miss Kate.
So, this is really and truly just to ask for your approval to apply for, um, to the Marjorie Moore Charitable Foundation. Um, I'm not sure how much we're gonna apply for. So, my understanding is that, um, years ago, Marjorie Moore did give the committee, uh, funding. We would love to get as much as we can. I'm not sure. I've never done this. Oh, I've, okay, thank you. So I may need some help as far as, um, Chris, what are you doing?
What's going on there?
Really want to know.
No texting.
We're talking about you.
Thank you very much, you know, so anything, uh, any help would be appreciated. Why can't get them more? People be happy. Okay, Donna, thank you for that. Alright, excellent.
Great, good. I was going to ask that question. Kate?
Be put on for the sixteenth.
Okay, okay, that's it. Yeah, thanks for that. Yes, 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 yes. Yes. Oh, yeah, no.
What I really need.
Yes, what do you need?
Is people who will take a project and go with it. So, the person that you are speaking about, um, had come into the office and, um, the committee doesn't really need more members. They need working people. And she is, yep. And she has, she said that she would do the assignment and I'm very pleased with that and going forward, that would be great. So, yes, um, this came up on Thursday and, um, I had full intentions of getting her on for the December sixteenth meeting. This had already been taken care of, but, um, I have included her in a lot of the emails since then, so just to make sure she's here.
Great, thanks, Kate.
On that note.
Yes.
One of the things that we did talk about and, um, it's still kind of being fine tuned a little bit, but I did want to let you guys know about it, is that we had a contest on our logo. Um, I'm pretty sure that this is it.
Oh, oh.
So, you will see that it's America two fifty. There's the B for Berlin.
Very nice.
Both the American flag and the, um, continental flag. And then it's very clear about Berlin, Connecticut.
Cool.
Very cool.
Alright, um.
Excellent.
The colors. Kathy Apal.
Oh, very nice.
We, we're fine tuning it now. Um, I've been in touch with America embroidery. God bless you. So, two more times and I'm telling the truth, you know? So, um, they're under the wire with this. We're hoping that, uh, maybe we could have some material for the Berlin fair as far as hats, t-shirts, sweatshirts.
Oh, cool.
Very tight.
Yeah.
All concerned about it, but one way or the other, um, my town manager has said that I could sell the products during the municipal election. I'm so happy and, uh.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Ryan's like, whoa, 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 you know, it's good.
I can give Brian a hard time. He's, he was a town clerk. He knows. Looking forward to it. I think it will be great. Um, and we have different ideas, of course, going forward that we'll start fine tuning and once, now that we have the logo and we start getting the material, um, we can put it on the website. Hopefully draw up more interest. I know there's a lot of people who want to be involved. I need them to be on committees. Like, if we're going to do the Yankee Peddler Day, I really need a salad chair for that. And then the different committees dealing with the, um, vendors and, you know, the, um, the, the food and everything along that line. The timing of it is just simply right now, we haven't been able to talk to the Lions Club as much as we would like because they have their fair. So, once the fair is over with, hopefully this would move forward and then we can start putting out the different, um, activities that we would like to see done.
Great, well, appreciate you working on this, Kate. I know it's not an easy task.
It's been fun.
But a fun one. Yeah, I mean, it's a great, it's a great.
I, I'm proud of Berlin. You know, you guys know that.
Yeah.
And, um, so, I'm, and, you know, Carrie is excellent to work with as my co-co-chair. She's been phenomenal. And we can bounce off a lot of ideas and we very much are, um, two opposites.
Oh.
It's quiet and I'm.
So it all works out?
Does.
It's all good. Alright, great. So we got a motion here, right? Yes, we do.
Move to approve the America two fifty Berlin Committee to apply to the Marjorie Moore Charitable Foundation for funding for event planning and authorize the town manager Ryan Curly to sign on behalf of America two fifty Berlin, the grant application.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, alright, so moved. Thanks, Kate. Yep, more work, because you don't do enough, town clerk, you know?
That's true.
Yeah, that's it.
She has to deal with reprimates like me, you know, tough job.
It's not easy, Peter. Okay, what are we at? Number seventeen? Oof, whoa. Seventeen in two hours. That's pretty impressive, I think.
In my role as a repository of expectations and broken dreams, I need you to please get me your evaluation for the town manager's, uh, evaluation in two weeks.
Alright.
So if you can, I emailed you the self-evaluation by the town manager. If you can get that to me, I can, consistent with the last however many years I've been doing it for you, aggregate the scores into one spreadsheet, review them at the next town council meeting and executive session and then you can go about giving the town manager his much awaited evaluation.
Yes.
Okay.
He's, uh, on the edge of the cliff waiting for it. I know, we know that, we know that.
I want to hear his report first.
What's that? Why?
Pretty much.
It, it could. No, no, no.
I'm gonna go through it. I got a lot, but we're gonna get.
Let's not mess it up now. No, just kidding. We're just good. It's all good. Oh, we got, wait, we got appointments.
Yeah.
Yeah, oops. And our zeal to get out of here. No, no, we love it here. We didn't, we forgot. So we have, uh, I think three, right? Here, Kate, we got three. Yes, so, uh, open the nominations for, uh, Manabasset.
I would like to nominate Liam Mitchell.
Thank you for nomination. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, welcome Liam back again. Button for punishment? No, it's okay. It's all good. Alright, we have a spot on the water control commission. Uh, I have a nomination. Open the nominations.
I'd like to nominate Sebastian Senna, Senna.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, right, so moved, and ZBA.
I'd like to nominate Michael Lemoneta.
Yes, thank you. Any other nominations? We'll close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so, on to Mr. Town Manager.
Alright, I'll go quick, guys. I just, uh, we do, we do got a lot of great, I think mostly good updates this evening. So just so you know, if you come into town hall over the next month or so, you're gonna see, uh, as you may recall, we approved the, uh, the move of the VNA and social services as well as a, uh, a space for the registrar of voters to conduct their early voting. So that's underway now. The VNA moved, they are in, um, what was the food bank, um, down towards Public Works. Uh, they're, they're temporarily until they, um, go to their permanent home, which will be where Social Services is now. Social, Social Services will move to the left side of where the VNA is, uh, was, I should say. And then on the right is where there'll be an open space for the registrars to conduct early voting. Uh, so the plan is to have this all done for early voting and, um, the hope is that this will be a test run because, you know, unfortunately municipal years don't draw the, the big turnouts, but we want to make sure that we're ready next year for the gubernatorial. So this will be a good, uh, practice, uh, with early voting this year. So you'll see that. Uh, the mayor mentioned the Berlin fair, so I won't touch on that. I, we did put out an email, um, you may have received it, on all of the updates that happened in our schools over the summer. Uh, and there was just a number of projects that, uh, that took place thanks to our facilities department, our parson grounds department, Public Works. Uh, they really did a phenomenal job on, on bathrooms at Willard, parking lots. It's, it's, the, the tiles, I mean, really, uh, and not only that, but when, uh, when we, I spoke with Superintendent Benigni last week, he, he could not have been more thankful for all of that work and wanted to, me, to extend an invitation to you and any council member that would like to tour any of the schools. He said they're in unbelievable condition, um, for the new school year. And so if there's anyone that would like a tour, I'd, I'd be happy to set that up. Um, just let me know.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we should walk through all of them again. It's been a while, yeah, it's been a while.
Good idea.
Figure out some.
Great, I'll ask, uh, I think Christie can probably help me with that too.
If you could pick like a, a Friday, I don't know if that's possible.
Pick a Friday.
Friday, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Is that good for most people?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
To drive us around.
Well, we can get a little bus too, I'm sure.
There you go.
There we go.
Alright.
What if it's got some new vans, e-cohesives?
Ah, there we go, there we go.
I was thinking more of a limo.
Peter.
You may see, uh, we just posted about it, but, uh, the town, we moved the cupola for the, where the.
Oh, yes, right, we talked about doing that, yeah.
The Historical Society, excuse me. And so that looks great. It's got a, a new pad. Uh, Steve Wood helped out a lot with that.
Glad we got that done.
As Mike O'Hern.
That's great.
Um, and, and Doug Solick, so, uh, so thank you to them. Jen wanted me to mention, we got, uh, that, there's going, you may see a, a sign that says game tonight uh, on the properties where we've, uh, put the vote today signs or the voting location signs for football games. Uh, we had a resident that wanted to remind, um, residents when the, uh, home football games are.
Oh.
And we said as long as you take them out the very next day, uh, we'd allow it and so, uh, so you may see that, uh.
Nice.
But thank you to that individual for, uh, volunteering their time, uh, to do that.
Good.
Uh, you may have seen that our animal control department received an award, uh, for being a no
Yes.
shelter in twenty twenty-four, so I just want to commend them for their hard work.
I guess have some video on that somewhere, yeah.
The no show or no kill.
There were some pictures and stuff on that.
There were pictures, yeah, pictures, video. Yeah, it was good.
Our, uh, our town clerk wanted me to mention there's an Eagle Scout project that will be, uh, cleaning gravestones in town.
Oh, nice.
Although where's, the Eagles, the scout is not from Berlin. We just want to mention these from middle town, but.
Oh, wow, oh. I mean, there, there are cemeteries, man, they have to fix those things up.
Meeting.
Got this stuff.
And, um, him and his father and he did a great job and he knows what Steve Wood will work with.
My uncle.
Yeah, so it's all.
Should do my parents. They got some stuff on there to spray in them.
That's it. I want to let you know that we haven't forgotten about Brightfeeds and the report.
Yes.
DPH is supposed to be provided.
Yes, oh, yeah. Where is?
I, I reached out to, um, our health director, uh, Charles Brown, and he, he reached out to the state. The report is complete, we were told. I, I had an email, uh, back in early August saying the report was complete, but it needed to go through a review process. And they wanted, uh, DPH wanted to share that report with DEP as well as the Health Department before bringing it to a council. But we'll do that once we get it, once, and I gave, uh, I gave Charlie dates for upcoming council meetings and we can do that presentation at an upcoming town council meeting, once we get that report.
Okay, we have any ETA on that? Don't know.
Not yet. I'm trying, I'm hoping in October.
Okay.
Or either our next meeting in September or one in October. We'll get that out. We haven't forgotten about it and I just wanted to make sure you guys, you know, so be on the lookout for that still.
Good.
The fire services committee. So I had sent some emails out, we, uh, the, those, uh, the sixteenth is good? Yeah, well, yeah, no, we're not doing it tonight. Yep, this thing, uh. Said that that would work as well.
The sixteenth?
And so, after that work.
I don't know.
I didn't bring the list with me, so I'd have to have it with you.
Well, meet so often, every ten years or so.
We'll set it for six PM. Is that? Six PM on the sixteenth, okay. Do. Alright. Okay, so we'll, we'll send that out to those who, um, who are on it. And then we'll go from there. Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll make sure you guys are all aware that. So I just want to give a brief update on the YMCA, we, as we do.
Yes, excellent.
Meeting.
Good.
We've had quite a bit of progress in, in the month since we last met. Uh, the phase one environmental report, the boundary survey, the topographical survey, wetland flagging report and geotechnical study of the Patterson Way property have all been completed and shared with the YMCA. And we're just waiting on an updated CAD file with a base map, uh, that we can get to their, uh, designers. So we're waiting on one more piece, but, um, they have a lot to, to get going now on.
Oh, good.
We'll have more soon.
Anything incredibly problematic that come out of it? It all looks good?
Everything's looking good so far. Yeah, the borings were good.
Nice.
So.
But, you know, Ryan, beside, you know, all these reports, I know that are required and everything, you know, has, why ever came back to us and said, we are, one of the main things they came up, upfront before we even decided, you know, had to do all this testing, was if they were able, going, overall gonna be able to fund this project. So, I mean.
So.
A lot of that is dependent on this or?
So they need to know what type of soils are there, what, what we're working with in order to be able to price up how expensive this is. So that's part of the deal where the town is trying to get all the information necessary for their engineer to come up with the pricing. And so once they do that, then we can have a seat at the table and we can figure out, okay, how can we make this work? And so, uh, so this is just kind of step one.
I, I hate to be a little impatient, but we're going on a year. You know, from when we brought the Y in in November of last year. They said, oh, maybe by the end of first quarter, we could even just let you know if we'll be able to fund it. But then all this other stuff came about, you know, so we're talking a year now, so.
I think they thought, uh, there was more information available, but the, the presentations we had through the last couple of years really was, um, by the person we hired, I'm, well, we'll beat, beat that to death anymore, but it was like a fluff job, quite frankly. I don't know how else to put it, but there was no real serious look at the site. So we, you know, didn't really realize that till we looked closely and we started talking to the way. Yeah, that's what happened, but, but the good thing is, you know, whatever we're getting done now, if for some reason the Y doesn't work out, you know, we have it too for what, you know, whatever.
I'm just there to get that information.
Yes.
We have a timeline on when this is gonna happen.
Well, it's hard to say, um, what, what piece you mean when it's gonna happen, like when.
When, we give the Y what they need.
We're hoping to have that by the end of this month, uh, to have the, that CAD file that I mentioned.
That's great. Okay, and then.
And then the ball's in the Y's court, because their engineer is going to have to, um, take that data and kind of price it up. And so we're gonna have to wait for them to.
Okay, so once we get that CAD file to them, we should just say how mu, you know, just ask them, ballpark figure, how much time do you need?
We can do that.
Cause I mean, they, they, cause you know, they, they were, you know, gung ho as far as doing this project and everything. And, you know, there's, you know, like I said, just been going on and on and on and on and on, you know, and we're sitting here, well, what's going on?
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, every, every month I, you know, every meeting basically, I've been beating this to death too because I want answers. You know, and, you know, every, every month I, you know, every meeting basically, I've been beating this to death too because I want answers.
Yeah, no, and, and that's why we, I do a report on it and.
Yeah, we've been, we've been meeting with them though. We're at a long. We've been talking to them. They're just waiting on.
A lot of progress. I know Micah Hearn and, you know, the PBC have been working on.
Donna, you okay there?
So, and I'll keep, I'll continue to keep you updated. I hope.
All right, thank you. You know, I appreciate that, Ryan. It just that, you know.
We all want this, right? So.
And there's a lot of people that want answers on this too.
Yeah. So.
Okay. We good?
Thank you. And I, one last piece.
Yes.
The, the last, the final piece of my town manager report this evening is to talk, I, I just want to, well, I want to get your feedback, but I want to make you all aware of something that I've noticed at town hall, especially in, in our engineering department recently. Because as you all know, we've had, Jim Mahoney has reduced his hours from five days a week to, to one day a week. And Jim had done quite a bit of work on, on not just grants, but also project management, particularly with the Steel Boulevard project as well as others. And, and so I've seen our Public Works Director pick up a lot of that missing piece that Jim was doing. In addition to additional work, as you all know, we have so many projects that we've been sending to the Public Building Commission and we have no shortage of projects coming. And I'm a little concerned, I'm, I'm concerned that we're putting too much on individuals in that department. And I am requesting the council's approval to explore the need for bringing back a, a project manager type position in that department. I, I do feel as though it's necessary right now. And I've spoken with our Public Works Director about it, who's, you know, who said that he, he needs some help. And I've also spoken with our Finance Department, our Finance Director, on how we might be able to accommodate something like that. And so we do have some funding in the budget that, that would allow for, for a mid-year position. If, if the council, you know, was interested in exploring that, we could look at funding a position that would start January 1 of 2026, which would then have a, have an impact on the fiscal '27 budget, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be that as much. And so really, I just want to put that out there, see what your thoughts are. I, I do feel the need exists. We, we have quite a bit of projects and.
And we had one before. We had one way back.
Ryan, I was just going to ask you about that too because, you know, with Jim Mahoney not being available, I mean, you know, as he was before, is he, are we still going to keep him on one day a week beside that?
I think it's in the best interests of the town to keep Jim on as long as Jim wants to.
Well, I was just going to say.
But that's another thing because we've had different situations that have come up where Jim has had to scramble. Now you remember, he's supposed to only be working one day a week. I was getting emails from him yesterday on Labor Day and he was sending, and he was putting agenda items together for tonight. I don't know how you guys want to envision your retirement, but I'm sure Jim doesn't want his retirement to be like that. And I'm worried also that, I don't want to burn Jim out. I, I want to have him for that one day a week too. And so, and so right now we just have a lot of work to do and, you know, we got to, we're going to get it done, but people are, you know, and we're looking for some relief.
I think it's a good idea, to be honest with you.
Is Jim cross-training anyone or to take over his role when he does walk away?
Jim is working with primarily, he's working with Chris, obviously, but he's worked with myself and, and Mike Hearn quite a bit. So we have those weekly TOD calls on Steel Boulevard. Now, Mike and I have been kind of, you know, running those, those meetings that, that Jim, you know, had been running. And then the grant component is something that I.
That's a lot of work.
The grant writing and, and it is. And so I envision, what, what my thoughts are is if we can have, keep Jim on for that grant component right now and we can focus on the projects, because the projects are where we need the relief on. Jim is, he's still very passionate about grant writing and we want him to do that. I'm looking at existing staff for that. But right now I, I think that we can still use Jim for the grant writing and for those opportunities. Exactly. Yeah. And so, so that's really the, the focus. It would be nice to have somebody, just for Steel Boulevard, for instance, to make, to be able to drive out, make sure that Lorero's doing what they're supposed to be doing. And, and, you know, Jim can't do that from, you know, from where he is and, and Mike has a million things to do. And, and so a project manager would be able to do that. And so those are things that I think, there's opportunities that we'd be able to address with that.
Go for it.
Yeah, good, good.
Yeah, go for it.
Oh, no. Okay. Oh, all right. Sorry. Hope he's all right, Kate. No. All right, all right. There you go. Hope he's all right.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think there was any special great committee reports because we were off. And Council Communications, oh, you have one.
I have one.
Sorry.
Whatever happened to the, the police cameras they were going to put up at the town line? Did that ever happen? Are they up and active?
The flock cameras?
We could ask.
It should be. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
We could ask, I think Drew's still on. Actually, I have a question for Drew too. So let's maybe try. He was. Drew? There he is.
Yes, I am here.
Drew, a glutton for punishment. We appreciate that. Yes.
Sometimes these questions come up right at the end.
Yes, as they do. You, you've learned.
Education, Drew.
Yes, you've learned. Yeah. So the camp, the flock, the flock cameras, what are we thinking on time?
The majority of them are up and active. We still have one or two that they had to move around a little bit. They're dependent on sunlight.
Okay.
Because they have solar panels. Though there was a couple that we had to explore moving a little bit one way or the other. But majority of the cameras are up and running, so we're very close to completion on that.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And Drew, while, while you're still here, I just have a quick, so I got, I was talking to a resident today at length actually for a while on Patterson Way. And his complaints, I, I, as well as I guess he mentioned other of residents on Patterson Way. And, you know, he, he did acknowledge it's probably worse in the summer, but, you know, the racing up and down the street, as I'm sure you're aware, and the parking lot, you know, just congregating there from, he said anywhere from 9:00 PM to 1:00 in the morning, even during school nights. I, I, he suspects some of them may, may not be from Berlin, but who knows? And then not only are they there making noise, driving up and racing, whatever they're doing in the parking lot in the street and leaving that a big hunk of trash there too, a lot of times in the middle of the parking lot. So just, you know, I wanted to pass that along to you. I told them I, I would and see what, what, what you have to say about that. I'm just curious. Cause I really haven't heard too many complaints about that. From time to time, right? But, but I haven't heard. He really had a, a big story.
We've had some issues from time to time. We haven't had any major issues recently, but we would welcome any citizens to call us if there was someone there that's causing disturbance or something. Sometimes we just don't know. I mean, we, we don't have the luxury of being able to park someone there for extended periods of time. So. And a lot of times we do, we do hear that and a lot of times we hear it after the fact, unfortunately. But yeah, we, we welcome calls and we're always happy to go down there and we'll, we'll take care of what we need to, to take care of. But I will spread the word for, for more extra patrols. School is back in session, so I'm sure there's going to be more activity as we go.
Okay. And, and I assume the, the trash, I think, actually Kate had mentioned to me before the meeting about trash there in the parking lot at, at, at the high school. I, I guess I assume the custodian comes out and picks it up, I, I guess in the morning, I don't know. But she said, you know, she said it and this gentleman said it too, that there was a lot of trash being left just in the middle, from, from the people, you know, from the people congregating there, I guess.
That is true. Building grounds has to come and basically clean up anything that's been left behind.
So, but you're not aware of, you know, I mean, you know, it's happening there, things are happening, but not to the extent that this gentleman kind of relayed it today, that there was, you know, quite a bit of activity on a day-to-day basis.
I haven't been hearing that, no.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm glad I talked to you about it. I'll relay that to him. And I did tell him that. I mean, I guess he's called you a few times, but I said, listen, call, you know, at that night, at that point in time, you know, officers three, of course. You'll run over there and, and clear it up. So I'll, I'll relay that.
I will send a message to the supervisors and have them reemphasize.
Okay.
To the, their folks that patrol that area to make some more frequent extra checks.
Yeah. All right. I appreciate that, Drew. Thanks.
Yes, sir. You got it.
Okay. Other Council Communications? Anything else? We good? Everybody's good? All right. So what do we got? Motion? Oh, approve the minutes. Approve the minutes of July 22nd, 2025. So move second. Don, I know Don is second.
Abstain.
So one abstention. All those in favor?
Abstain.
Three abstentions. Okay. All right. All right. So. Move to, yes, a motion to adjourn. So move second. All those in favor? Aye. No abstentions from that, from the motion to adjourn?
That wasn't bad.
No, it really wasn't, not for what we had. Had a lot of stuff on there, right? It's not too bad, actually. Not, not really, not really too bad. Relatively speaking, it could have been worse. Yes, could have been a lot worse. Thank you.
Thanks. Bad, right?
No.
Oh my God.
Like, I don't like my visitors that much. I look at it, this is like, that's for a guest room. I don't want my guests to stay that long. They need to feel comfortable.
Don't make it too comfortable.
Exactly. They'll never leave.
Thank you, Dave.
Well, I get, it's like I said, they're, they're Sealy's, they're made domestically. They're for migrans.